This meeting today is being recorded. Again, my name is Jane Carbon and I'm the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. And tonight is our meeting by GoTo due to the COVID pandemic. It is a public meeting on the GoTo and today's date is Wednesday, October 28, 2020. And first, I'd like to welcome members and the public. Today, we're going to have a presentation of the FY21 applications. We'll do a short introduction, have public comments, and then talk about our priorities in regards to housing, open space, and historic preservation. And first, I'd like to do a roll call of members of the committee. Vice Chair Laura Barrettski.
Present.
Luisa Olivera.
Here.
Tatiana Shannon.
Here.
Amelia Aboff. Eleanor Rances. Heather Heimark. Christina Kennedy.
Here.
Kaitlyn Hart.
Here.
So if other members, I'll check to see if other members are joining or Judith can look while we're starting the presentation. And I just wanted to say Amelia's here. Oh, great.
He's trying to join as well.
Who is trying to join Judith?
Elina.
Yes, Amelia's here, correct?
Yes, hi.
Okay. Just in opening remarks, I just want to say, obviously, the threat of COVID, what that poses to our community is unprecedented. And I would like to start by taking a moment to recognize the lives that have been lost during the pandemic. And also would like to appreciate the hard work and sacrifice of all those who've been working to save lives and keep us all safe. We can't thank them enough for their rising to the challenge during this time. The CPA is making a real difference in our community by increasing affordable housing, improving local treasures like the Solomon Museum, and bettering places for adults and children to collaboratively play in places like Central Hill and Prospect Hill Parks. And I want to thank Somerville residents and my colleagues on the CPC and the CPA grantees for their contribution towards this program. I also know how challenging it is to work in an uncertain environment, but I would like to thank you all for taking the time off to participate in this public hearing. This hearing, as I said, is being held virtually on the GoTo public platform in compliance with Governor Baker's emergency orders regarding the open meeting law during the COVID-19 crisis. This year, more than 430,000 is available to support projects in the open space recreation land and historic preservation. The city has received two applications in the open space category and six applications in historic preservation category. Tonight, seven applicants will be presenting their proposal and the committee invites public comments at the end of the presentation. The committee is accepting written comments until November the 2nd and should be sent to the CPA manager. Details are on the website. More than 750,000 in fiscal year 2021 CPA funds have also been designated for affordable housing projects or in programs. And those awards are overseen by the Somerville Affordable Housing Trust, which is accepting project proposals through November the 2nd. This year, we were able to celebrate two ribbon-cutting ceremonies at Prospect Hill Park, one of Somerville's most beloved passage parks and is also a local historic district. And we also received, one of our flag projects Mystic Waterworks was selected to receive the 2020 Mayor Thomas Menino Legacy Award. So we're very excited about that achievement. I also want to take the moment to recognize and appreciate Caitlyn Hart, the representative from the Historic Preservation Commission. And on behalf of all the members and myself, would like to sincerely appreciate the contribution that she has made as a representative for the Historic Preservation Commission. And she joined during normal times, but during this pandemic has been a great asset to this committee and having participated in the public hearings and meetings online. And we want to express our gratitude to you and to your expertise in historic preservation issues. Thank you for a job well done. And Alan Bingham, I want to welcome as the Chair for the Historic Preservation Commission. And thank you for sending great representatives for this committee. And you will be standing in until another member is nominated. So I appreciate that.
Thanks, Jane.
So now we'll go through. Judith, the Program Director, will say a few words. And then we'll go through the presentations.
Thank you. I'll be speaking about the CPA program. So the Community Preservation Committee is a body that is responsible for implementing the CPA in Somerville. The committee consists of nine members, including four members from the general public. The committee makes sure that the proposed projects fit into one or more CPA categories and ensures that projects are eligible for CPA funding. The city is currently looking to fill one general public position. And preference will be given to candidates with professional experience in the construction industry and housing development. Applications are being accepted through November 6. The Community Preservation Act is a Massachusetts law which has so far been adopted by 177 communities. The law enables adopting communities to create a dedicated fund for preserving open space and historic resources and expanding community housing and outdoor recreation opportunities. The committee, the funding comes from three sources. It's charged on real estate property tax and can be between 1.5% to 3%. In Somerville, the charge is 1.5%. And these funds are matched each year by the state and we're blended community. So the city put in an optional additional appropriation of funds. The law is very specific on what can be done and not done with these funds in each of the CPA categories. And the fund can be used for historic preservation, to acquire historic resources, preserve and rehabilitate them. This is the only category that the funds can't create historic resources. In the open space and outdoor recreation category, the funds can be used to acquire new open spaces, create recreational land and open spaces, and preserve and rehabilitate if acquired or created with CPA funds. One thing to note is that CPA funds cannot be used for maintenance or to replace current expenditure. I thought of 79 projects have been supported by these funds. And the city has received more applications than the available funding. Now, this year is the first time that the debt service for the West Branch Library will be paid. This is also the second year that the debt service for 100 Homes project will be paid. Like the Chair said, applications for affordable housing are open and the deadline is December 2nd. The CPC uses a competitive application process for awarding funding to projects. The first step is the review of the community preservation plan, which establishes the committee's priorities to fund the project. It's based on core city plans such as the Summer Vision 2040 and the Open Space and Recreation Plan. The committee then reviews applications from May through November. We are finding recommendations that need to be canceled for approval in December.
Just to remind everyone to mute themselves while the presentations and everyone is talking.
This table shows the number of applications and the amounts requested for. The slide, like earlier, says indicates the gap in the general funding, which is over 700,000. And the next chart shows the gap in the different categories. For open space, we have a gap of over 200,000. And for historic, there's a funding gap of over 500,000. So again, we are accepting written comments through Monday, November 2nd. And those are the details. You can send these comments to, and also more information is online. So at the end of the presentation, each person will be given an opportunity to rank the projects in order of their preference. So you can use the different criteria, three for high priority, two for moderate, and one for low priority.
And you can rank, you can share your priorities in the chat room. That is part of this presentation. And Laura, the Vice Chair, will be facilitating that at the end of the program. So just a little about the logistics. So we're going to have the presentations now. The Healy Totlot will be the first. Each presenter will have five minutes. And then there'll be two minutes for questions by committee members only. And then we will go through all of the proposals. And then at the end, we'll have a public comment period. And each person that has signed up to speak has two minutes to speak about a specific project. So the first proposal is the Healy Totlot. So representatives from the Totlot, if you could present, that'd be great.
Hi, I'm Jake Wilson. Thank you to all the members of the CPC for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm the President of Friends of Healy, the parent group that's involved with this from the Healy School and we're pairing with PISOF on this application. As you see there on this slide, it's an example of the layout of the school there and the current conditions there. This work is, it's a continuation of the work that was really inspired by the Healy and Mystic Master Plan that received CPA funding a few years back. The Healy Schoolyard Master Plan, it's a separate process that began last summer, summer 2019. It's gone through a thorough community process. There was an online survey that received 133 responses from a variety of stakeholders. There was individual feedback with the landscape architect, teachers, and the administration at the school. The gym teacher was involved, given their intense interest in this. And there were three separate community meetings that were held both at the school and at the Mystic Learning Center and the nearby Mystics. The result was a plan with strong community buy-in and really enthusiastic support, as the members of the City Council's Finance Committee will tell you, after the Healy Parents packed a committee meeting last fall. We're asking for funding for the Totlot to kickstart this work. It would allow us the guaranteed ability to move forward with the Phase 1 component of the larger master plan during the coming construction season, summer 2021. Now, this could be executed simultaneously with Phase 2 if larger city funding allows. This work was supposed to begin last summer, but was delayed due to COVID. But this would allow us to reduce the overall bond amount required for the project as a whole. The proposed Totlot equipment is appropriate for its primary users, pre-K through grade 2. Pre-K and K students at the Healy have direct access to the Totlot through the exterior doors of their classrooms. And there's a full construction set for the Totlot from the Landscape Architect, Warner Larson. And that allows us to be bid out for construction as a separate standalone piece. Arn has the SBC, the full cost breakdown. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hello, everybody. This is, this is Arn Franzen as well. I just wanted to say that Jake, thank you very much. That was a great presentation. And I just wanted to say to the CPC members that the city and PISOF fully support this partnership and this project.
Great. Thank you. Now, do any committee members have any questions regarding this application? I guess I have one question. Judith had said earlier that obviously there's a shortfall in the amount of funds that are available. And it's going to be very difficult for the committee to make decisions. And obviously, we want to fund everyone to the fullest extent. But is there, is your request, is there phases of this plan? Or potentially phases of this plan if not 100% of the funding was available?
Jake, I'll take that. I think that this is a complete package. Given the nature of the construction and the components in the Totlot, it would be the entire thing. I don't think, it's unlikely that there could be, would be an economical way to phase, to phase the space. We see this, in fact, as Jake said, a phase of the larger project. That project includes the 2 to 5 Totlot, which you see in the top left corner of this plan. The larger schoolyard, which you see to the right of the school. The soccer field, which is cantilevered over the slope above Mystic Housing. And the new ADA ramp, which goes down to Mystic Housing. So while the Totlot for the 2 to 5 age group is a vital piece of the project, it is just one component of it.
Arn and Jake, this is Luisa. Sorry to interrupt, Jane. Can you guys either make the slide bigger? I think we are not able to see exactly where the Totlot is. If I'm correct, it's outlined in orange. Is that right?
That's right. Yes.
You can maximize the slideshow or scroll down a little bit so we can see it's at the top left.
Yeah, you can also do it on your laptop if you click on the zoom in and zoom out.
Do we have another slide, Jake, that shows that? That's a close up of the Totlot.
This is Laura. I just want to say we are at time for this, the Q and A.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's a photo. Thank you for your presentation. The next presenter is the City of Somerville, the Stabilization Fund, to see the Open Space Acquisition Fund.
Committee members, this is Arn Franzen. Again, thank you very much. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation for you, but I do have just a narrative that I'd like to read through. So please bear with me. Again, this is Arn Franzen. I'm a project manager with the City Department of Public Space and Urban Forestry and the applicant on this request. I'm also a former city-designated member of the CPC. I do not have, as I said, I do not have a slide presentation for tonight. But I will forward a copy of this presentation to Judith for your records. I'm here tonight to request that this Community Preservation Committee dedicate $50,000 in additional funding to the Open Space Acquisition and Improvements Stabilization Fund, which the CPC previously established as a tool to save for and purchase new acres of open space. As many of you are no doubt aware, benefits of public open space are well documented. In addition to the social and economic benefits to neighborhoods, access to vegetated areas such as parks, open spaces and playgrounds has been associated with better health, reduced stress levels, and reduced depression. Therefore, while I am listed as the applicant for these funds, this request really is on behalf of the city. As we know that more acres of open space will improve access to these recreational and restorative spaces for the benefit of all Somerville residents. And as frequently stated, we've heard this before, there's a critical shortage of open space in the city. Somerville is the most densely populated city in New England, and it has the least amount of open space per capita. And clearly, the Community Preservation Committee itself recognizes the benefits of open space. As it discussed, the need to provide land acquisition funding since the committee was first formed in 2012. And I remember those discussions well. And as you, the members, know, in recognition of the stated CPA goal of dedicating funding to preserving open space, the Community Preservation Act itself states that the Community Preservation Act is a Massachusetts state law that enables adopting communities to create a dedicated fund for preserving open space and historic records and expanding community housing and outdoor recreation opportunities. In addition, the addition of new open space is also a consistently articulated goal by Somerville residents and the City Council. It's consistent with the priorities identified in Summer Vision, the city's comprehensive plan, the city's open space and recreation plan, and the various neighborhood plans that have been developed.
Two-minute warning, Arn.
Yeah, thank you. And so finally, then, while the goal of land acquisition fund request is to expand and preserve new open space opportunities for the city for the future, I also recognize that the total amount of funding set aside at any time may not be enough for outright purchase of an entire property. However, by setting these funds aside, the CPC can use them as a strategic tool to leverage other city funds and take advantage of critical or time-sensitive real estate opportunities. Thank you. In closing, I wanted to thank you for your consideration for this request and for your previous support of land acquisition funding. And while my request tonight is relatively small, I would like to request that members of the CPC consider increasing my request and adding additional funds as you see fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Arn.
Do any committee members have any questions?
Yeah, I do. As Arn said, obviously, open space is something near and dear to the heart of the committee and our mission and everything. My main question was, you proposed this as a seed funding, and I wondered if the city is making requests of anyone else or has like a list that you're brainstorming to add to it because it's probably a relatively small amount of money compared to what the city needs, I'm guessing.
That is absolutely the case. I mean, one of the things we know is that the real estate market in Somerville is sky-high. And even with a substantial amount of funding in the fund, it might not be enough to do it, make an outright purchase of a property. So we would imagine that these funds would be tied to other funds or would be leveraged with city funds for a purchase. At this point, there isn't another acquisition fund that's in place for the purpose of property. When projects come up or when a particular property comes up, it would go to City Council. However, we feel that with this fund in place, these funds would help leverage those funds. And they may also allow us to respond more quickly to an opportunity that came along. One of the things, Christine, that you mentioned was the small amount of the funding that we're making this year. In previous years, the request has been substantially more. And I just wanted to say that a couple of things. We know that there are, there's at least one other request for these funds. We also know that there's this, this is the year of the COVID crisis. And so we know that there are lots of pressures on the city to, you know, to use money for COVID-related issues. And so we didn't want to ask for too much. And would like to open up the possibility of adding additional funds by Preservation Committee members. Thank you.
Thank you, Arn. We have the next presenter is for 181 Broadway House.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, thank you, everybody. This is Marcia Hannan. I'm a Senior Project Manager for CASCAP. And also tonight, Becca Schofield from HRI is with us representing this project. And I wanted to just let you know, this is for Broadway House. We're requesting historic resource funds for the for the exterior of the building. And CASCAP has been in the neighborhood for quite some time. We were founded in 1973, and our mission is to provide stable, affordable housing and services to those who are disadvantaged by poverty, disability, or age. One of our primary focuses in doing this has been affordable housing. And we have been working in partnership since 2019 with Homeowners Rehab. If you look at the right-hand side of the slide here, the top slide is our offices. The bottom floor is our offices and the upper floor are housing for disabled adults. The middle photograph is of Auburn, which is a historic building which we renovated and then added two more additions to, again, this housing for disabled adults. The lower picture is Somerville Place on Highland Ave. Here, we took this building and reconfigured the interior and again, made affordable housing for adults. So we have been very much focused over the years on taking historic buildings in disrepair and converting them to affordable housing. So there's three areas in which we have been focused over the years, as I've said, affordable housing, supportive housing for seniors, disabled adults, and ineligible individuals, permanent housing. Several of our programs are for clients of the Department of Mental Health, and those services are provided by a separate organization, Vinfin. We also have a rep payee program, which is very important because it really helps stabilize formerly homeless individuals. Everyone in that program earns less than $10,000 and has a very difficult time meeting their bills and keeping their housing stabilized. So it's really been a great asset for that. As well as we have a resident services team that helps over 1,000 elderly and disabled adults in affordable senior housing. And again, on the right-hand side there, whoops, if you can go back for a minute, just on the former slide. The top is Center House, which we renovated. And that's for disabled adults. The middle is Three Gems, which was completely gutted and reconfigured, again, for disabled adults, supportive housing. And the lower picture is Harvard Place, which is housing, all of these are affordable. And this is for seniors over 62. And here, okay, if you want to, this is, okay, description of the project. Broadway House, it's historically significant. It was built in the 1880s by Joseph Litchfield. As I said, it's right now being used, causing for those with chronic mental illness. Or if you advance it, you can see, hear the details of the building. We are asking for historic resource funding in order to take and replace the windows here with energy-efficient, historically-appropriate windows and to work on some of the siding that needs repair. As part of the project, we're also going to be improving the accessibility in the kitchen and the access to the building. And those will be funded through other sources. If you want to advance it to the next slide. And so, so the benefits to the community is the preservation of this building. And it's an example of the 1880s era, as well as it's an important resource for the most vulnerable of the city. Those who are disabled and need 24-hour support services and have very little income and would have difficulty finding an alternative place to live. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. And any questions?
Yeah. I had a couple. One was, I saw that this was, this is a 125K request, but the project is closer to 200, 193 and change, I think it was. And you mentioned other sources. I was wondering how close to those are lined up, are they being to line up in the timeframe? What you see the timeframe of the project being? Are they being to line up in the timeframe, what you see the timeframe of the project being?
We do have the resources for the remainder of this. And what we were thinking is the timeframe would be in the spring.
Do committee members have any more questions?
I have one.
Sorry, Jane, I have a question.
It's sort of the same question as with the Healy Tot Lot. I do too, sorry.
What's your question?
So confused. As with the Healy Tot Lot, given that there's a pretty big gap as far as funding availability for historic preservation, is the historic preservation work you want to do, is that something that can be done in stages, or is it a one-and-done thing?
Well, it would be nice to have all of the funds at one time, and there would be some cost savings to that. There would be some ability to do that. In particular, I think the front facade of the building is the most important, but we could look at staging some of these repairs and costs.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Jane, this is Alan Bingham. Can I ask a question?
Alan, you are representative of the community?
I'm with the commission.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, this has not come, is this, it says it's here, it's approved for eligibility for historic resources, and you say it's significant. Has this ever come before the commission to be categorized as significant? Do you know?
Yes, yes, we were at the meeting right before these were due. I forget the exact date, but yes, it was determined significant.
Okay, second question is, is this a local historic district? It's not, is it?
No, it isn't.
Okay, and basically, the windows are something that we could possibly advise you on as a commission, and that might be helpful. And that's something that you could talk to Sarah White at staff, swhite@somervillema.gov about.
Okay, terrific.
We're at time for the Q and A on this, Jane.
Okay, so those are good questions and answers. So we'll move to the next project, which is the Somerville Museum.
Jane, can I, it's Louisa. Can I just make one technical suggestion that might be helpful? When these are up, if you go to view, you can make a full screen view. We will be able to see the entire slide. I don't know who's manning the.
So every individual can control the screen and, on their own camera, zoom in and zoom out. So they're represented from the Somerville Museum?
Yes, hi, this is Barbara Mangum. I'm the president of the board of the trustees of the Somerville Museum and have been before you many times. Thank you for allowing me to come tonight and talk with you about this. The museum has requested 100,000 and a little more, 600, to basically improve the security and access to the collections. And the access, as you know, right now, we're in the middle of starting, well, we're starting the construction of the elevator. And that has been access to the building. And we're trying to bring the building into the 21st century for the Somerville public. So the access is not just physical access to the building, but also access to the collections. So this request really is to renovate the collection space as well as add important security improvements. And it's just part of what the entire cost will be. The entire cost of the project is closer to 400,000. Basically, you can see from the images that the collections are overcrowded. And the environment, they're currently in the basement, and the basement has a rather poor environment in terms of high humidity. We have dehumidifiers there that are keeping the humidity down right now. But what we have done is, in order to go ahead with the construction project, is to remove all the collections from the museum. So now the collection space is empty. And this is a perfect time then to go and renovate that area to put in waterproofing and environmental control. And so we're very excited about this opportunity. And it's really kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We don't expect to be ever emptying the museum of its collections again. And this will really take advantage of that and bring about the chance to really renovate that storage area and to allow then much greater access and use of the collections. These are all historic collections. The amount of money I asked for was also based on the amount of money that the museum had been awarded in earlier CPA grants, but we repurposed so that we could go ahead and start construction of the elevator addition. So that's in part how the amount that we asked for came about.
Does the committee have any questions, committee members?
Yes, it's a similar question that we've asked, I guess, the other projects, which is, you say that this is, you know, sort of one quarter of the total cost of this project. Will you be able to raise the funds elsewhere to finish this project?
Well, we're doing right now a capital campaign. We're still in the silent phase. We will be going public, though, we think, by late November and December. So far, we've had pretty good success with raising about 60,000. And we think that we can raise the rest. We have a really great capital campaign going on, and our co-chairs are Mike and Kitty Dukakis. And we have a great campaign committee. So the 60,000 we raised was in the first month of September. And we think we can do it. We're also taking advantage of the fact that all the crew for the whole construction project is on-site. And so we're getting a reduced price for the renovation. If we had to stop and then do this like sequentially, it would cost us much more to mobilize again and have everybody come back in. Plus, there would be the storage costs for keeping the collection out. Anything else I can say, answer questions?
How long do you expect the collection to be not, to be stored elsewhere?
Right now, it's between 10 and 11 months. So we would have to come up with a commitment by the trustees to go ahead with this project so that we can start demolition pretty soon. Of course, time is moving on, but we're due to really start the project November, about November 15th. And with the cold weather, we hope, though, that we'll be able to continue at a pace during the winter months. Everyone seems to think we can. And then the funds would come in toward the end for renovation. So it would be while they're still on site.
Okay. Does anyone else have a question for Barbara?
Amelia has a question in the chat, Jane. She's asking how much of this project, if any, is the same scope as the previously awarded funds that were allocated to the elevator project?
Sorry, I thought that earlier, I think it was covered. I'm happy to hear a formal answer, but I'm sorry if it's redundant.
So the security is exactly the same as what was requested earlier. The scope, rather, the cost is about the same as well. It's a little bit more now that time has passed. As far as the scope earlier in the award that we got for FY19 was to prepare the collections for leaving. And now the collections have left. And so the funds are being used to actually just go directly to renovation of the storage and then preparing them to come back.
We're at time for this, Jane.
Okay, thanks, Barbara. The next presenter is for the base relief, wood base relief restoration project, repair and restoration of that at the Somerville Library.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Kevin O'Kelly. I'm the local history librarian at the Somerville Public Library. And we have on the ground floor a base relief that was carved under the auspices of the Works Progress Administration. It depicts several local events that occurred during the War of Independence. And in this location, it has been hit and nicked over the years by book carts, baby strollers, whatever's been dangling from people's backpacks. And in 2018, the Community Preservation Act Committee awarded us $6,055 for the relocation and restoration of it. That budget was based in part on a quote from RIN Art for moving and installing the base relief upstairs. But then, after repeated phone calls, it became obvious that they were no longer interested in taking on the work. So after contacting numerous different art-moving companies, I finally found one that agreed to do it. However, they said we would have to find a separate contractor to create the wooden stand. So go to the next slide, please. So we were able to find a contractor who created this stand. It's of, it's sanded oak, mitered corners, Jacobean stain. However, the cost of the stand alone was almost $3,000. And the, and then with the quote from the moving company as to what they would charge to do this, that brings projected total expenditures to $4,519, leaving $1,500 remaining of the original grant. And the wood conservator, who's agreed to do repair and restoration work, has quoted us a fee of $3,400 for her work. So overall, the project is facing a budget shortfall of $2,374.
Two-minute warning.
Yeah, so basically, we're asking for an additional $3,500 to cover the budget shortfall and to provide us with additional funds to cover any unforeseen changes in quoted costs. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question about unforeseen, I don't believe that we can fund unforeseen costs. Or is there something specific that you think, that you're waiting to know about?
no, I was just thinking about possible price changes. For example, Erie Landmark Company, at the time of the original grant application was, they said they would only charge us $500 for a plaque crediting the CPA with funding the project. No, just after, you know, last time, I requested the amount of money I thought I needed and got burned.
Gotcha. I guess the other question on that is, is there a planned schedule for this? Because if there are delays, then prices have been shifting quite a bit.
I've been in touch with Crozier Art, the moving company. And they think they can do this over the next couple of months. And then Christine Thompson, the wood conservator, has said her schedule will be opening up in the new year. And she said, once the base relief is on the second floor, it's all a matter of us just setting a date with her to go to work. So with any luck, this would be done by mid-February at the latest.
I'm asking more because I don't know if it's allowable, but I think we can spend some time with Judith figuring out if there's possibilities to leave a contingency or not. I don't know how we've handled it in the past. But having it done, not waiting on it, will assure that your estimate is as. Of course, I understand that that's not always in your control.
Right.
Was the cost of the stand in the original proposal?
The original art-moving company I contacted, RIN Art, just said the cost of the stand was included in their quote to me of $1,055. They said that was what they would charge for both the moving and installation on the stand that they would provide.
But then you had another one built because they didn't, they dropped out.
Because they dropped out, yes. And the other, and most of the moving, art-moving companies I talked to balked at the project because of the size and weight of the base relief. And when I finally found one that agreed to do it, they said, you'll need to find somebody else to make the stand. We don't do stands.
Does anyone else have any questions on the committee?
Yeah, where does it go on the second floor of the library?
It will go upstairs into the main reading room. And on both sides of the stairwell going up to the main reading room are brick walls. And the, and the brick wall on the left has been chosen, the space by the brick wall on the left has been chosen as the location. The brick wall will provide ample support and backing for the base relief, just like the wall on the ground floor does.
We're at time, Jane.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
The next presenter are members of the Grace Baptist Church.
Hi, my name is Salvador de Magistre Fangrikan. I am CEO and founder of CHA4CD. Our mission is to provide supportive services to our diverse and cultural Somerville community and neighborhood. And we are committed in development program that builds strong kids and strong families and strong communities. As you see, we have several programs. Our main program that we are working very hard in this pandemic time is our Food for All pantry. We used to, before the pandemic, we're feeding over 500 families. Since the pandemic, we have been working four days a week, and 300, over 300 families have been feeding every single week. We have a truck with 17,000 pounds a week, vegetables, meat. And inside that, we have, today, we have the opportunity as a CEO to bring to the 19 families with the COVID, we bring food to them most of the weeks that we have been working in the pandemic. I mean, we are trying to help this community. We are trying to support the kids and family. I would like to introduce Mrs. I would like to introduce Mrs. Lynn.
Thank you very much, Salvador. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Could we go back to the prior slide, please? So thank you, Salvador. This committee has seen me on two prior occasions on behalf of the Grace, the Perkins Street Baptist Church, later called the Grace Baptist Church. And today, the home and headquarters of the Somerville Hispanic Association for Community Development. My firm started working with this group three years ago with the first grant application. This is a landmark building. It's in a historic district. It was initially constructed in 1853. It has great presence and great lineage. It had been expanded significantly in 1873. It was built with high-quality materials, slate, brick, stained glass, and so on. However, these materials have reached the end of their their service life, if you will. And when we began our involvement with this group, we encountered significant issues related to leaking roofs, structural defects as related to it, poor windows, and poor conditions of masonry. With the help of community preservation funding in two grants, over $1.1 million has been invested in this building. However, that's in the context of over $3 million of need. So I will turn this over now to John Kecker, the architect who's been working on it, for a brief overview of the current application.
Can everyone hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Could we please go back to the previous slide again? Thank you. On the top row, you see some of the previous work. We've tried to focus on the exterior envelope in the previous phases of work, the roofing, the gutters, the brick masonry, the exterior shell of the building. We also repaired some structural defects that affected the roof and ceiling support over the daycare center. Down below, you see photographs that are along the north side of the building. And what we're proposing in our application are a number of things. More or less finish up the exterior envelope work. Provide accessibility to the lower level. Salvador gave a very nice explanation of how they serve the local surrounding community. One of that, one of those components is the food pantry, people coming in and out, carrying boxes of food. Some of these people don't own cars. So I've been in the winter, watching this on Mondays and Tuesdays where people come in in snow and rain. They climb up the driveway, they climb up a series of steps, or they go downstairs to the basement, the lower level where the food pantry is. And that's what you're seeing here. And so our application covers a number of things, exterior envelope, accessibility, security. There are some doors that are really non-functional, and there's a homeless shelter for families on the upper floor. The security function is not quite critical, but almost the doors are difficult to lock. So knowing your budget limitations this year, a little over $400,000, $450,000, I think I will maybe kind of alter my presentation a little bit to say that we have various components that could be part of the funding process. The exterior envelope is about $60,000 to complete some gutter and roofing work, some flashing, counter-flashing work where the main tower meets the main roof. If you were to look in our application, item B, C, and D, they add up to about $60,000 for roofing, gutters, and flashing. The other component that I would say is say that again?
We're timed, I'm sorry.
We're timed. So could I just say one last thing about this? In conclusion, John is explaining that this can be divided into various parts of funding buckets, if you will. The availability for money for this building is limited. The center has succeeded in securing two MPPF grant applications in addition to the monies that have been awarded by the city of Somerville. But the challenges of funding historic preservation projects are very real. And there's not a lot of other opportunities other than community preservation in front of us. So thinking about this in various buckets, if you will, is certainly something to be considered as we look at your funding shortfalls. Thank you.
Can I add one thing? Okay, go ahead.
Why don't we go to questions of the committee? Just in your in the presentation, you said the $60,000, but in your application, it's further broken down, so we can review that in more detail.
10 categories, 10 different categories.
Okay, just a number of
I think the accessibility is an important issue, and it is something that you cover with the CPC funding. And the way we've come up with a scheme to provide access, it's actually cutting into the grade. If you're standing on the sidewalk, you're literally only six inches, there's only six inches difference between the level of the kitchen and the stage and the sidewalk. So our proposal, if you look at the drawing, is to raise the depressed dining area, make it level with the stage and the kitchen. And so cutting into the slope, it's a very interesting thing. It's hard to visualize when you're on the sidewalk, but you're only six, there's only a six-inch difference between where you are and if you were standing in the kitchen and on the stage. So if we brought the seating of the dining area up about a foot and a half and made it all flush, the kitchen, the stage, the dining area would all be at one level.
Okay, thank you, John. I really want to move on because I don't want to shortchange other presenters, and we also want to go through the public comment period. So do any other committee, thank you. Do any other committee members have any questions? Okay, with that, we will move to the last presenter, the Broadway Winter Hill Congregational Church Bell Tower.
Great. Hello, my name is Christian Cole. I am the administrative pastor at Vida Real Church. I'm accompanied by Leilani Mendez, who is also with me. She's our operations director in Hearts of Life, which is our nonprofit organization where I also serve as well. And I just first want to say thank you to everybody on the committee for taking the time to hear these. I just want to give you a little bit of history about Vida Real and then a little bit of history about the building. Vida Real has been around for about 15 years. We have campus locations in Somerville and Medford. Even though we've had a short existence, we've only been around for a few years. We've had a great impact on the community, serving as a place of worship, a food pantry. And things that aren't mentioned on there are language schools, music schools, rehabilitation programs, all done at that 404 Broadway location. And during COVID-19, we were serving over 900 families at the height of the pandemic. And so many of you, if you had went down Broadway, you would see the families lined up. Just if you could step back to the last slide, I'm very sorry. One, if yep, one more. Okay, yep. So I want to just talk a little bit about the building. It was built at 404, I mean, it's on 404 Broadway. It's from 1890, originally known as the Broadway Winter Hill Congregational Church. As many of you know that are part of the Historical Society of Somerville, it's in the museums. You can see all the pictures of the restoration that we've been able to do inside, just as the congregation and members of the congregation through their companies. Now, our main focus is on repointing, restoring, and reconstructing a little bit of the bell tower, which is what I want to talk about now. And that's why does this need to be reconstructed and restored? And as you can read, I put it all out there, but it's urgently needed due to the state of the bell tower. It has poor structure that now causes water damage and both interiorly and externally. As Somerville is known, and we all know about the pristine neighborhood, which is a lot of what they were talking about before, the price of real estate and things like that, as that's gone up, we want 404 Broadway to really be a reflection of that neighborhood. So not only those who are passing the building by transportation and on foot will stop and take beauty, notice of the beauty of Vida Real. This church has been a landmark and has served not only the church, but the food, as a food pantry as well. On top of that, things that I mentioned was music school education, Center for Immigrants to Learn English, computer skills, and also houses a nonprofit organization that helps those in need both locally and abroad. You can go if you would like more, what'd you say? I'm sorry?
Two-minute warning.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. What are our goals for this project? So it's the restoration of the bell tower. So the nonprofit can focus funding specifically on the needs of the community. Our plan is to expand the food pantry, expand the programs that help immigrants in the community, that it would continue to be a landmark in the Winter Hill community and not become an eyesore. As you can see on the picture there, you see some of the slate coming off, you see some of the different problems from the pictures that we've seen that needs repointing, both inside and outside. So the goal is to have the bell tower last, we want it to last another 150 years. So we have the next slide, which I present, the budgeting, one slide back. So this was provided to us by JFB Construction and Masonry, who are general contractors who provided us this quote. So I'm actually looking at the quote in front of me that this quote includes the, if you could go back to the first slide, if you don't mind, I know my time's running out. But I just want to talk just a little bit of the bell tower. So the repointing, it would be the very first slide, sorry. It would be, so the budget is at $89,700 with an upfront payment of $44,850. Again, sorry, the first one, the original slide? So that's, that would be the second slide. Nope, two slides back, another slide back. Yep, there we go. So you'll see from these pictures, these are exterior pictures, but it's showing, you'll see the slate work that needs done, the repointing that needs done, the water damage that needs fixed. So that is all included. So once again, as I close, I would really just like to thank you for considering us. We consider it an honor to be a part of the Somerville community, and we want to not make this an eyesore, but really let it continue to be one of the most influential and important buildings in Somerville. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do committee members have any questions on this presentation?
Yeah, I have a question. Could this be broken down into several stages in smaller projects? Record on a smaller investment.
Great question, sir. As as this is such a delicate thing, that was one of the questions that we had asked. The stages are actually in the original application that we sent in. Unfortunately, most has to be done at the same time. So we would do the, basically, the roofing and what we're really focusing on on this project is roofing and repointing. That would fix a lot of the water damage. Those are things that we can take care of ourselves. But our biggest focus, this quote is basically for roofing and repointing, which would have to be done at the same time due to the location. As you know, that's a corner, it's a corner lot. So that's right on the corner. That has to be done because we're going to have to bring in cranes, things like that, and building the staging for people to work from. All of that has to be done in a timely manner. So yeah, it would have to all be done pretty much in one shot, just due to the location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on what you said about the staging, did your contractor describe the type of staging they would use? Or you said crane, so is it, is it one for the slate and another for the masonry repair?
Yeah, so I may, I may be speaking a little bit out of term. I asked him to be on the call to explain this better to you because my knowledge isn't that good. I'm just going off of what he told me. I'm not sure what would be different or whatnot.
Okay. And does he say how long it was going to take for this work?
Yeah, our goal is to get it done with between three to six months in total. Hopefully, he told me hopefully aiming towards three. Six is a precaution. Because, so these pictures show just the front and the side view, but there's also, if you look at the first picture to the left, the big view of the tower, we would have to redo the roofing on the whole, the whole side of the building as well, which would take a considerable amount of time longer.
We're at 10, Jane.
Okay. I think, I think that unless anyone else has any other questions, that concludes the presentations for tonight.
One quick question on this project. I'm assuming that you would be re-roofing with slate, is that correct?
Yes, so we would be, so, okay, I would like to give you a more in-depth answer on that. They've made, what our contractor was telling us is that it wouldn't be this, the same. And there's people in this call much more knowledgeable than me. He explained it to me in layman's terms because I wouldn't be doing the work just overseeing the project. But there's a waterproof, it's not actually made of slate, but it's like a slate, it looks like slate. So it's actually
Slate-like?
Yeah, it's slate-like, exactly. Thank you.
And his guarantee is 150 years, you said?
Yeah, he said that it's going to, that's our goal for the project. That's what we asked for. The roofing, yeah, that's the aim for the project as a whole, including the repointing.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So now we want to work through on the agenda, the public comment period. So I know there are members here of the public, and I think we, during this COVID time and these go-to meetings, we typically have people write their name in the chat. And if you want to say something, we'll call your name. And then you can talk a few minutes, I think it's two minutes per person, to say a few things about one of the projects or more, a few of the projects that you wanted to support. So if there's anyone that makes, wants to make a public statement, enter your name in the chat. Okay.
And the chat button is in the upper right-hand corner.
Right. I see Janet Wood Spanola, so why don't you speak first, Janet?
Thank you.
Pronounce your name.
Sorry, excuse me, Jane. Jane, can they introduce themselves as well before they can comment?
Okay, so yes, Judith said to introduce yourself as well, so we can, we're recording this presentation.
Okay, so can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So my name is Janet Wood Spanioli, and thank you for allowing me to talk. I'm talking on behalf of Somerville Museum for particularly talking about the waterproofing and the climate control. And very quickly, I want to tell you a little story. When I was very, very young, it was a time of the steam train. And I was fascinated by the steam trains, and I would often run up to level crossing and wave to the neighbor, to the people traveling in the train. And somebody had the foresight, when steam was going out, to save one of those steam trains and put it in a museum. And then somebody else had the foresight to save the signal box and put that in a different museum. Both of those things are still in the museums today, and climate controlled and conserved beautifully. And the reason why I mention that is because the Somerville Museum has a wonderful collection of daily life, day life from generations past. a wonderful collection of daily life, daily life from generations past. And it's so important for people to be able to come face-to-face with objects. And it allows people to cross time and learn about the people in our past and all their hopes and dreams and frustrations. And by learning about the past and knowing about the past, it allows us to make changes for our future, learn about how to, how to improve our cultural selves and our own knowledge, or our own knowledge. And somebody said that our past informs our future. But only if we take action today and in the present, will that future of our Somerville wonderful collection of daily living survive? And I don't know whether you've been into the basement where the collection is going to be held, but it is not in the best of conditions. It has moles growing up the walls. It's not healthy for people who go there, and it's certainly not good for the collection.
Thank you. Thank you. I think we're trying to keep these at two minutes.
Yup, okay. So, so thank you very much. I appreciate you listening to me, and I hope you support the museum.
Thank you, Janet. The next person in the chat is Jeff Myers. Jeff, you're going to introduce yourself.
Hi, Jeff Myers. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of the Somerville Museum. So I appreciate you hearing another application from the museum. We appreciate your prior support for the museum, and especially for the prior support that allowed us to go forward with the Access for All project, to build the elevator at the museum. So we are thrilled that it's actually getting going. It's, with your help with all these other funding sources, we're making it happen. And as Barbara mentioned, this is a critical opportunity for us to improve the conditions of the collection while it's gone. It's just, makes incredible time sense for it, to not have to move the collection twice, to leverage the cost savings of being able to do the demolition and the work while the other construction is happening within the building. And as you know, we, we had to shuffle our previous funds over to make the elevator project happen. And so, we, we are really interested in just getting the same support that we had for our previous applications reiterated to allow us to complete the project in this really time-sensitive point during the construction. So I definitely am sympathetic to your challenges of picking amongst the projects and balancing the needs of everybody. Everybody has very valid, very useful projects. And we appreciate your support of the Somerville Museum.
Thank you, Jeff. The next presenter, the next community member is Diane Blewett.
Diane, you're muted.
Hello, everyone. My name is Diane Blewett. I'm treasurer and one of the trustees of the Somerville Museum. I'd like to say, thank the CPA for your past support. Other members have talked about the museum. I wanted to point out, we did a basement project recently with students from the Somerville High School, and they went down into the collections. And they each had to pick an object and talk about it and displayed it exhibit in the museum. And it was a great experience for them. And we want this to continue, and we want to have a nice area for people to go down to do workshops in a safe environment. I also want to point out, the museum has been very active during the COVID times. And we've had online lectures dealing with diversity, migration, community, hetero-dogmas. So I hope, if you have not seen our website, please visit our website and see what we have to do with the museum. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Regina is next.
Hi, my name is Regina Piza. I'm a trustee of the museum and have been involved in the museum for well over 30 years now. I want to thank the CPA for everything that it has invested in the museum. It is really transformation, it is transformational for the museum. And our biggest focus is public access. When we converted from an historical society to a museum back in the 80s, we did so to open ourselves up to the public. That's why ADA access is so important. And that's why this project with sex, the basement, is so important. It's not just about conserving the historic materials in the basement, but it's about providing access to them, to the community. Barbara, Diane talked about the high school students. It was, if you had seen how transformational it was for them to do this exhibit, to hold these artifacts and these items. And the hope is that through this project of restoring the basement, we can not only preserve these really valuable items, but we can make them, we can provide them, provide the community access to them. So, but thank you again for all you've done. You really, what you have done has been transformational for the museum.
Thank you, Regina. Stephen Mackey is next.
Thank you very much, Stephen Mackey. I'm with the Somerville Museum on the Board of Trustees, and like Regina or others, I'd like to underscore, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just want to make sure. Thank you very much. And I want to thank you for the support that you've given the museum, and also compliment the presenters this evening. And as usual, I work for the Chamber of Commerce, so I'm familiar with so many worthy projects in the city, and certainly a number of worthy projects all tonight. The thing about the museum is, and I, like Regina, have been involved for 30-plus years, is this is the moment, this is the opportunity, this is the one time that area is being cleared out, the collection will be out of the building, and there'll be an opportunity to really make a tremendous difference. And that will be the first time in nearly a century, the building cornerstone was laid in 1925, this is almost 100 years later, this is the opportunity. So it's the moment in time, I think, for you to really consider this, and as you have in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. I see, is Evelyn Batinelli going to speak?
I'm Evelyn Batinelli. I've been the director here at the Somerville Museum for many years. Tonight, we are here to ask for your support, for caring, for our vast collection of Somerville memorabilia. We are so very grateful for the support you have given us in the past. This, the Somerville Museum is owned and operated by the Somerville Historical Society, which began in 1897. It is a unique treasure in the city. Our collections are very important to the city also. And we need to, this, we need support in getting our collections in a more usable way. We appreciate anything that you can offer us. Thank you.
Thank you, Evelyn. I think that's the last of the public comments. And again, thank you for everyone for speaking and attending this public hearing, and also for the presenters and describing their projects. I think it's a real challenge for committee members this year to have to go through the applications and make some decisions. But, but I think we'll, we'll hopefully do the best we can. The next and last phase of this meeting is to prioritize the projects that were presented tonight. So again, in the chat room, if folks wanted to rank their, the projects according to their priority, and it gives us, it's helpful for us just to see where people's interest lies, and also letters of support that come in after this meeting, it gives us some information on what the community thinks, as it is very important for us to consider when we're looking at the applications. So if folks wanted to spend a few minutes and say what their priority was for which, which project that was presented tonight, that would really be helpful to us.
Jane, do you want that broken down by category? Say historic versus open space versus other things, or just in general?
Well, I think, I think what project, so if, for example, the Haile Tala was their highest priority, that they would rate that as number three. And if somebody had the Somerville Museum as their highest priority, they would rate that as number three. And then we could count how many, how many people rated the different projects. I think that's how it's done, unless Judith, tell me if I'm wrong.
Yes, you're, you're correct. And the CPC members don't participate. It's mainly for the public and for the applicant.
Would it be possible to get the agenda that listed all the projects back on the screen?
Oh, that's a good point. So we'll give five minutes for people to prioritize. And while people are still doing that, I'll say, our, our next meeting is going to be held Wednesday, November 18th at 6:30. And again, it will be a go-to meeting. And at that meeting, we'll be reviewing applications. And I just want to check, did any, any other committee members come in a little bit late that I didn't, I didn't, after Amelia, did Eleanor, is Eleanor here?
Yes, Ellen is here.
Okay, great.
I had, yeah, I had a little trouble with the phone there for a minute, but it worked, and I've been here right along. Thank you.
Awesome, great. So I think that was all the, so all committee members are here. And again, I want to thank Caitlin for participating on the committee as a historic commission member. And again, welcome Alan Bingham to the committee, until there's another member found. So.
If Caitlin wants to make a few remarks, this is the opportunity.
Sure. Thanks, Judith and Jane. I just want to thank my fellow committee members. I feel like I was just getting warmed up and kind of oriented in this process. And I'm very sad to have to back out, kind of at this critical moment, but you will be in terrific hands with Alan. Thank you, Alan, for stepping in in the interim. I appreciate it greatly, and I know the rest on the committee will as well. And thanks also to Judith for all of her hard work in coordinating us and providing us with the materials we need.
Yes, and your, your moving away has been a great loss to Somerville, I might add. And we've all enjoyed working with you. Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So I think we have, and just to double-check, Judith, are you recording the voting on the priorities in the chat room?
Yes, and I'm talking with Alan, I think Alan. Alan, do you have any remarks? Alan, you, my director.
Oh, yes, Alan.
Hi, hi, I'm sorry, I'm just turning on my camera. No, I think the committee and, and the members have covered it all.
Great. Well, I will take a vote to adjourn this meeting, the Community Preservation Committee meeting on October 28th. And the time now is 7:55. Is there a vote to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it. That's Laura.
Great. Heather and Laura, thank you. And again, thank everyone that presented tonight and the committee members that attended the meeting. And thank you, Judith and Alan. And we will see everyone at the meeting in November. And again, appreciate everyone's contribution and efforts. And it's, it will be a challenge, but we'll do our best to try to assist everyone as best we can. Again, thanks so much. Meeting adjourned.